And good evening. Welcome to a special meeting of the Mayor and City Council for the City of Tonny Town. We'll begin with our pledge to the flag, and I'll ask Councilwoman Foster to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you're tuning in at home, it probably feels a little wrong to be watching Mayor and Council on a Tuesday night in the middle of a month, but bear with us. It's worth it. Let the records reflect that all council members are present and accounted for this evening, as well as city staff. City Attorney Jay Gallow is virtual, and also the city treasurer, Barry Avalone, is here with us as well. We're going to begin with the main portion of the evening, reception of delegation Deleon and Stang for our 2021 audit presentation with Michelle Mills and Addie Blickenstaff. And so with that, I will hand it to you ladies to tell us all about our finances.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks for having us this evening. As usual, we have prepared a PowerPoint. You have all been provided a draft copy of the audit report. We have chosen to do the PowerPoint that summarizes key highlights of information that we think is most relevant to you, and we're certainly available to answer any questions you may have specific to the audit report. So let's begin. We're going to start with the required communications. Professional standards require that we communicate the following items to you at the conclusion of each audit. There were no new accounting policies adopted, and existing policies did not change during fiscal year 2021. There were no transactions that were entered into by the city that lacked authoritative guidance or consensus. We encountered no difficulties in performing the audit. There were no disagreements with management, and there were no material misstatements detected as a result of our audit procedures. We were engaged to perform a financial statement audit. The responsibility for the financial statements is that of management. It's important to remember that the responsibility of the auditors is to plan and perform the audit to ensure that the financial statements are free of material misstatement, and to express an opinion on those financial statements based on our audit procedures. The audit was performed in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards, as well as government auditing standards. The city will receive an unmodified opinion on the financial statements, and again, unmodified means a clean audit report that the financial statements are fairly stated. In accordance with government auditing standards, we are also required to look at the city's internal controls over financial reporting, and we are required to communicate if there are any material weaknesses in internal control that are identified. We have provided the definition of what is a material weakness, and are pleased to report that there were none identified during this most recent audit. There were no instances of noncompliance required to be reported under government auditing standards.
This is just a reminder that in accordance with government auditing standards, we're required to display two sets of financial statements, the government-wide financial statements, as well as the fund-level statements. So you'll hear us use those terms, and we're going to start with the government-wide statements as we go over some financial highlights. We're going to start with the first required statement, the statement of net position, which reports the assets' liabilities and net position of the city. So government-wide total assets were just over $45 million, which was a 12.2% increase from fiscal year 20. As you can see from the chart, business-type activities, i.e. the utility fund, represented 70% of that total, with the remaining 30% represented by the governmental activities of the city. Now, we're going to look at some of the significant assets, and again, as a reminder, the governmental activities were 13.6 million of the total. If we break that down, you can see capital assets represent 61%, or 8.3 million of the total. Next, their cash and cash equivalents are just over 5.1 million, and other assets of 191,000, or 1% of the year-end balance. If we compare this to the total assets of the business-type activities, which are about 31.5 million, you can see 63%, or just under 20 million, are represented by the capital assets of the city. Cash and cash equivalents have 10.7 million, or 34% of the year-end balance, and remaining 756,000 of other, which comprises the receivables owed to the city.
The next several slides are going to focus on the total liabilities of the city. At June 30, 2021, the total liabilities were just over 15.2 million, and that was a 5.4% decrease over the prior fiscal year. As you can see by the pie chart, 11.4 million of the liabilities are for business-type activities, and the remainder is 3.9 million, and that was for governmental activities. Similar to when we are looking at the assets, we're going to break it down so that you can see what comprises the 3.9 million of total liabilities for our governmental activities. 60% is the net pension liability at 2.4 million. The remaining other debt is just over 1 million, and that was 26%. And then we had other liabilities, which typically is accounts payable and accrued expenses of about 14%, and that's just over 528,000. For business-type activities, the pie chart looks a little bit different, the debt being almost 10.9 million, and that's 96% of the total liabilities, and our other liabilities and pension liability, as a percentage, are relatively small. This next slide, everyone loves to present this slide, but again, we'd just like to throw this in as a quick reminder that when you're looking at the financial statements, you're seeing terminology that's a little different than what you see in a commercial business. You see the terminology of deferred outflows of resources, as well as deferred inflows. We've provided a definition for you as a quick reference, and then, just as you look at the numbers, the majority of it is all related to your pension accounting activity.
The last required piece of the statement of net position is the net position, and the top just reminds you of the accounting formula. Assets plus our deferred inflows, minus our liabilities, and minus our deferred inflows equals the net position at year-end. The governmental activities reported a net position of 10.1 million, with the business-type activities ending the year at about 20.3 million. Again, just breaking it down visually, total net position was 30.5 million, a 10.5% increase, and you can see that business-type activities comprised 67% as compared to governmental activities at 33%. There was something new for this year. We did do a prior period adjustment. So during the fiscal year, the city finalized and took acceptance to three separate deeded infrastructure properties, ranging from an original agreement date between fiscal year 18 and fiscal year 20. So because they were properties deeded in prior years, we recorded a prior period adjustment back to both the governmental and business-type activities. So as you can see in the chart, the prior-year audit report would have reported a net position for governmental activities at the beginning of the year of 7.5 million, and we added $2 million for the acceptance of infrastructure for a revised net position of 9.5 million. For the business-type activities, the acceptance of infrastructure was just under 1.2 million, which revised the net position fund balance to 18.1 million. This breaks down the net position into its related components. As you can see, for governmental activities on the left side, capital assets net of related debt was just about 7.3 million, with the remaining being unrestricted. If we look at the right side, for business-type activities, we have capital assets net of their respective debt of just over 9 million, a restricted net position balance of 7.4 million, which we'll look at in more detail on the next slide, and the remaining 3.9 million of unrestricted. Again, just the definition of restricted means there are limitations imposed on the use, either through enabling legislation adopted by the city or through external parties. At year-end, the business-type activities has about 26,000 restricted based from the loan reserve, and the remaining 7.3 million for future capital infrastructure, which is related to the benefit assessments received by the city.
The second required financial statement for the government-wide presentation is the statement of activities. And you'll see on the left-hand side, we are showing you the governmental activities. The total expenses were just over 4.3 million. And then across the top, you'll see we have broken down the revenue sources between program revenues and general revenues. Included in program revenues is charges for services of just about 390,000, operating grants and contributions of just over 509,000, capital grants and contributions of about 138,000, and our general revenues for fiscal year 2021 were 3.9 million. And that's including your real estate taxes, your property taxes, other local taxes, and again, is the significant funding source for your governmental activities. The next slide does the exact same thing for your business-type activities. The total expenses for the utilities were just over 3.3 million. Our charges for services were just under 5.4 million, and you can see here, general revenues are a much smaller revenue stream of about 165,000 for the business-type activities, and there were no capital grants in fiscal year 2021. The next slide just breaks down the change in net position. Governmental activities had an increase of 652,000, and our business-type activities had an increase of 2.2 million for the overall change in net position for the city of 2.9 million.
We're now going to switch from a government-wide focus to a fund-level focus. That's why you see we're highlighting this is the balance sheet of the general fund. So you can see total assets were about 5.3 million, total liabilities of 435,000. Then if we skip to the bottom, total fund balances of 4.9 million. We are required to present that 4.9 million of fund balance into these five different components, and we're going to highlight the definitions in each piece on the next slide. The first one is the committed fund balance, which means amounts are to be used for specific purposes because of a formal action, i.e. a resolution or ordinance by the city's highest level of decision-making authority, i.e. you, the mayor and council. So the 490,000 at year-end represents the open space and park impact fees that have been collected. The next level down are the assigned fund balance. These are amounts constrained by the city's intent to be used for specific purposes, which can be stipulated by the mayor and council. However, they weren't done via a resolution or ordinance, so they don't meet the committed bucket. So this comprised two different things. There was a cumulative balance of $20,200 collected in police impact fees, and there's about 22,000 of remaining lease obligations of a non-cancible capital lease. If we just hop back for one second, I'm sorry, I realized I didn't say. So you can see the committed and the assigned balance there, and the remaining 4.3 million of the 4.9 million fund balance is unassigned, i.e. not designated. Presentation, the statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balances. Total revenues were about 4.9 million. Total expenditures of the general fund were just over 5.1 million. So there was a small deficiency of revenues over expenditures of 121,000. You may wonder, well, we're reporting a deficiency of 121,000, but Michelle just told me that there was an increase of a net position of 652,000 for the government-wide. This middle piece is how we get from point A to point B. Some of the largest items is there were capital outlay expenses of 849,000. Associated with those capital outlays is the depreciation expense that has to be recorded of 543,000. The third-largest piece is the net pension adjustment, which again is only recognized on the government-wide statements of 350,000. And lastly, the fourth-largest are our debt service payments and expenditures of 124,000. This last slide is going to switch our focus over to the utility fund, comparing the operating revenues and expenses to the prior year. So as you can see, at year-end fiscal '21, we went from 4.3 million to 5.5 million of operating revenues, a 28% increase. Expenses jumped 11% from 2.6 million to 2.9 million. This obviously caused the operating income to increase from 1.7 million to 2.6 million, and for the overall net income to be reported at 2.2 million at year-end. Again, getting from operating income to net income are just two small non-operating expenses in revenues, your interest income and your interest expense on your debt payments. Any questions?
I do. In the utility fund, I'm just seeing massive difference between expenses and revenue. It seemed to have much higher revenue, and the expenses seem to have dropped significantly. Are we at the tipping point? I'm going to steal Joe's thunder here.
Yeah, one of my questions.
Right. Joe, go ahead and ask your question, sir. Go ahead. I don't want to steal your thunder.
Mayor, go right ahead.
Are we at the point that we need to look at the water sewer rates to better balance that out?
Do you want to jump in?
Yeah.
Yes.
2.3 million of the revenue benefit assessment fees.
Okay.
And we did look at this, because there is a large net income at the end of the year, and we said, okay, if we exclude that 2.3 million of benefit assessments, do your charges for services cover your operating expenses? And if we look at just the amount of water and sewer service charges, they cover, what was it, 80%, I think, of operating expenses, which includes depreciation, which, again, a lot of people say is in a, you know, cash expense.
Right.
If you exclude depreciation from that total, your charges for services are above and beyond the operating expenses.
Okay.
So, I mean...
Above and beyond, do we have a figure, a percent? Do we have...
We could certainly get that to you, yes.
Okay. I think that would be a good figure to know.
Yeah, sure.
All right. So when we were putting this together and trying to anticipate the questions that you would have, of course, I would look at it as well and say, wow, 1.3 million was pretty substantial last year, and now we're at almost 2.3 million. So we did want to make sure that we had that correct. And it is benefit assessments. You've had two years where you've had significant benefit assessments. So if you look at these last two years in isolation, they're probably not typical to what you might have seen previously.
Right.
So we did look at it, and of course, we always hear the question, are my rates sufficient? And again, as an accountant, we say that your rates should be sufficient to cover your operating expenses, including depreciation. So when we looked at it, and as Addie mentioned, you are covering 80% of your total cost, which is probably far better than many other municipalities. We have some that choose not to even budget for depreciation because they don't feel it's appropriate because it's not cash. Of course, that's not the position that we would take as the accountants or auditors. So we would certainly be glad to give you as much historical data, and quite frankly, Barry probably has it just as easily available. But you've had two years with significant activity as a result of the development that's going on.
Right.
Does that help?
That does. That's...
Also included with that, affecting that, 205,000, not 205, 250,000 were connection fees for new houses.
Right. Okay.
So that, if you weren't building new houses, you wouldn't have that.
And that's all part of the growth that we don't budget for. We specifically don't include those things. At the end of the year, it looks like a great number, but in reality, it's... Okay. Very good. You have any questions, Mayor Porton?
The one question, Michelle, that I ask you every single year. Did you, in the simplest, plainest possible language for anybody who's watching, did you find any sort of financial malpractice, any kind of misappropriation, anything at all that would lend itself to impropriety?
So I think I usually say my candid response is that if we detected any of those type things, you would be hearing from us, because we are required to communicate that to you. We do look at the internal controls, and we do make an assessment as to, did we find anything that we think is material and/or would warrant attention to the mayor and council? And as we reported, there were no items noted during the most recent audit.
I think that certainly speaks volumes about our treasury staff.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Michelle, and thank you, Addie.
So obviously, you do these for a number of municipalities, I'm sure. Do you see the trend that we're on comparable to where they are as well, in terms of our net position gaining like it did, or are we kind of an outlier?
You had good numbers.
Okay.
I would say that you guys have substantially more development than the other municipalities we're dealing with.
In the current period.
Right. Okay.
You probably also are heavy debt compared to some of our others.
Okay. Interesting. Okay. Anyone else on council have questions for them? Okay.
Right, before we part, so I want to make sure we don't forget, you complimented Barry. We would like to also compliment Barry and her team because they were very well-prepared. Everything went as scheduled, and while that seems like obvious, it doesn't always happen that way. I mean, we could certainly tell you that there's many times in which something is scheduled, and for whatever reason, it doesn't take place, or promises are made, and clients don't deliver. That was certainly not the case with Barry and her team, and we were able to come on-site for a few days, which was really nice. Part of the audit was still done remotely, and it was very efficient. And again, Barry was super responsive, and I can only say high marks for Barry and her team.
I'm very glad to hear that. I don't think enough praise could possibly be given to Barry and her team for what they've done. I think the last several years, you've shown to be an absolute valuable treasure to this city, and I thank you very much.
I really like this place.
You.
Jim, when we were meeting with Barry earlier, what was it? We were going over something, and Barry said, I'm so excited about this, and we both laughed. We said, I don't know how many people would be super excited about... I think we were talking about pension adjustments.
He gets excited about those things.
She's definitely a problem solver. You tell Barry there is something that doesn't look quite right, and she's going to be on it and find the answer very quickly.
I figured that's the case from the long roll of paper hanging out of her adding chain at all times. It's a tripping hazard, but that's just... Very good. I imagine you would. Anything else, ladies, you'd like to share with us?
So I guess we would just share. So the last piece is we will send the management rep letter, get signatures, I believe yours, Jim's, and possibly the mayor's on it.
Yep.
And then we'll get this finalized and get the uniform financial report, which is an external reporting to the state, completed and done by 31st.
Very good.
Get a copy of the PowerPoint, too.
Sure.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Perfect. Well, what we do need tonight from council is we do need to approve this for it to be submitted on time. And so I will entertain a motion from council to approve the audit as it was presented this evening. Do I have a second, please? Very good. We have a motion from Councilwoman Foster, second from Councilwoman Fuller. Is there any discussion on approving the audit this evening? Okay. All in favor of approving the audit, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Excellent. We can stay on schedule. Ladies, thank you very much for coming in this evening.
Thank you very much.
As for the rest of council, we have two more items of business we'd like to address this evening. First off is a purchase of a skid steer loader. The Department of Public Works has been salivating over skid steer loaders for several weeks now, trying to determine which one they would like. I believe they've made a decision, and I'm going to ask Mr. Weper to if he'll fill us in on some of those details.
Yes, and just to set the stage a little bit, we have been having some issues with our current skid loader. It's basically a bit undersized for what we needed to do. So DPW has done a lot of research. They've had a few different units brought on-site and tested out, and have decided that they would like to move forward with a JCB skid loader. The cost of the unit is 90,545, but the dealer is going to, we're going to trade in our 2007 John Deere skid loader, and that's got a trade-in value of 23,000. So the net would be 67,545. We would like to go ahead and get this order placed, so hopefully we can have the new piece of equipment before the snow flies, in the event that we do have heavy snows, and the skid loader comes in very handy with that. And also, the new unit will work with our existing mower deck, and there's a, don't want to get real into the weeds, but the mower deck that we have doesn't work as well with the John Deere we have now as it will with a higher-flow hydraulic system of a newer skid loader. So, and this one also has a boom arm that will allow us to reach into areas that we can actually drive the equipment into. So, for example, the, many of you are probably familiar with the stream area in front of the middle school by the parking lot there. We have an agreement with the school to keep that mode, but we can rarely get in there to do it. So with a piece of equipment like this, we can extend the boom arm and get farther into that area, even when it's not dry enough to drive the mower or the skid steer. or the skid steer in there. So should be a positive thing, and we kind of want to move on and get away from the John Deere while there's still some trade-in value to it also. So what we're looking for tonight is, and this was not foreseen in the budget. That's why we're coming to you with it this evening. But we would like to go ahead and place this order and get the equipment in.
And they do have it. They don't have to wait two years to get it.
Randy told me that the dealer has received a serial number. Apparently, that means that it's, that it's very close to, to production.
It's not on the cargo ship somewhere.
I have a question.
No, go ahead.
Yes. Sorry. Were you going to say something? Go ahead. Jim, did you mention what the operating capacity is for the skid loader?
I did not. I'm not sure what you mean by the capacity.
Like, you said it was, how much? 90 grand?
Yes.
Okay. So I assume that it can handle over like 3,000 pounds of, like, that's, that's a pretty hefty price tag for a skid loader. I'm sure it'll handle quite more than that.
3,000, let's see. Closed cab, 306, 3,695 pounds. I'm not sure what ROC stands for, to be honest.
Then that makes sense. That just seems awful high.
I don't know.
Well, I have a feeling that it's able to do things that justify that price tag. I just wanted to verify that. That's all. Right. I understand. Good stewards of the money. I, I do know they spent a lot of time researching these, and they, they were getting into the weeds that we, we will not, but I appreciate your attention to that.
So do we need a motion simply to approve the purchase? Or do we need to make the motion to amend the budget to approve the purchase?
We will be approving the purchase, and then a budget amendment will come later.
Okay.
So with that, I will entertain a motion if you wish to approve the purchase.
I will make a motion to approve the purchase of the skid steer loader.
And a second, please? Very good. With that motion from Councilwoman Fuller, and the second from Councilwoman Foster, is there any further discussion?
From the cursory look online, it seems like that capacity is impressive, Councilwoman. And that the price tag probably is a good one, considering the boom arm. Giddy up.
Is this just for the machine itself? Are there other attachments that they're getting along with it?
This is just the machine.
Just the machine itself. Okay. But all of their current attachments do work.
And, and let's see, so there is an 84-inch bucket.
Okay.
That's, that's coming with it. But our exit, the, the attachments we have currently will work with this unit.
Will work with it. Okay. Very good.
Now, if you'd ask me the horsepower, I have that ready.
There's men here. What is the horsepower of that?
74.
Oh. That's not, that's exactly right. I was, okay.
We're not talking muscle car.
I know. My truck's 410. Let's just, probably has a lot more torque, I'm going to say. Anyway, back to the topic. Is there any further discussion on the motion to purchase? All right, hearing none, all in favor of approving the purchase of the skid steer loader, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay. Very good. And lastly, I would like to make four nominations for boards and commissions this evening. We have two vacancies on the Board of Appeals. I would like to nominate these two people to fill those vacancies. The first is Jim McCarron. Second is Tim Dunn. For the Ethics Board, I would like to nominate Ava Miller. And for Planning Commission, Bill Eisenberg. Any questions or concerns with the nominations presented?
All of them want to do it.
Yes. Yes.
Which commission was Ava?
Ethics Board. All right. If there's no questions, I'll entertain a motion to approve the nominations.
Motion to approve all nominations for members and board specified.
All right, and a second, please?
Second.
Very good. We have a motion from Mayor Portem Vigliotti, and the second from Councilwoman Foster. Is there any further discussion? All right, all in favor of approving the four individuals for various boards and commissions, signify by saying aye. All right. Anyone opposed, say nay? Very good. With that, I'll pass the contact information on to the city clerk. She can reach out to them. And I know we'll have a Board of Appeals meeting coming up very soon for them. All right. I'm going to go ahead and say, is there anything else for the good of the order this evening? I'll accept a motion to adjourn. And a second, please? Right. We have the motion to adjourn from Councilwoman Foster, and the second from Councilman Hand. All in favor of adjourning for the evening, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, say nay? Have a great night, everybody.